The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. All right, let's go to our trustees and members of the, uh, of the community. Much. Um, we will go to approval of minutes looking for a motion to approve the June nineteenth twenty twenty-three village board meetings and file May tenth twenty twenty-three architectural review board. The May fifteenth twenty twenty-three finance committee, the May twenty-third twenty twenty-three planning commission minutes as presented. I'll wait to approve the motion in a second. A motion in a second, any discussion about the minutes as noted on the agenda? Very good, uh, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right, let's, uh, look at anybody requesting to be heard in the audience. I think you're in agenda, so sounds good, there's no one present, so we'll move on to business presented by the president. At this point in time, everything has been handled through the agenda, I have no business. Well, that's a bad way of putting it, but I have no business to present. Going to resolutions, ordinances, action item, uh, we have a resolution here for discontinuance of three hundred seventy-five square feet of public right-of-way and attached set lands to thirteen twenty-five and to fifteen twenty-seven Wisconsin Avenue. Jesse, what did that?
Um, yes, I can lead it off with a high-level explanation. We actually have two related, um, items here being a resolution for the discontinuance of three hundred and seventy-five square feet of public right-of-way and the dedication of forty square feet of public right-of-way at thirteen twenty-five, thirteen twenty-seven Wisconsin Avenue. This is, um, known as the Heinz fifty-seven, uh, building. Um, the current parcel boundary does not incorporate the entirety of the building footprint. It is simply a historical matter, whereas a longstanding platted downtown area, roads were built, roads were improved, sidewalks installed, et cetera, and this is cleaning up the right-of-way lines and, um, looking to actually, um, give a much clearer uh, picture of what is there and, um, how it is oriented. Um, so with that, um, as I mentioned, the current parcel boundary does not incorporate the entirety of the building footprint. So that, uh, would, the new lines would, um, provide a boundary for the parcel to include the building footprint, but then also there would be some, um, right-of-way dedicated back and about forty square feet on the southern portion of the property to the village, uh, which is currently public sidewalk. So again, this is really a couple of housekeeping, related housekeeping items, um, brought to the village board this evening. There was a series of meetings, as noted in the IFC, that is the process as set forth in state statute, um, which, uh, is requ- required by the village to be followed.
Very good, uh, no one has any concerns on this, we'll do the resolution, um, and then we'll also do the, uh, I guess the acceptance of the property in a second motion.
But if just taking over the relevant section here, but I assume that is for the. And the. We noticed that during, um, kind of prior past notice, simple notice, past period recognition. Or the, the actual. They don't need to, I apologize about that.
Motion to table, just so. I think the motion to table.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 With our sincere apologies.
So. This and the other thing that we didn't catch now. Will this be resolved at the next meeting and all the three meetings from here?
So, um, attorney program indicated that the, um, uh, right-of-way dedication, forty square feet, needs to be via a state certified survey map. Um, and so that would go to the plan commission, so the board, um, could wait until after the July plan commission meeting, get that recognition on the certified survey map and then go to the next available meeting in August. Make action on both the discontinuance, the right-of-way and the, um, small mitigation.
Consensus here, okay with everybody? Yeah. So we'll get this, we'll get this going as quick as we can.
We close on the twelfth, so we're something to share about.
Twelfth of July.
Of July, we moved it up because we thought this would be the end of the night, but.
Right, staff certainly does not have any concerns about these items at all, or does any concern that you want to be at this time?
Oh, we've, you know, in through the calls, special meeting on that, but, um, that still has to go to, um, still has to go to planning commission, but.
Only the, only the dedication, um, the discontinuance, which is, I would argue, more important matter, um, could go, could happen in the next little four weeks. So if you wanted to split it up, that would split it up several weeks.
Okay. So I'm, I'm a bit confused here, uh, so basically the, the dedication, we're okay with, we have no problem with that, but it's the, um, it's the abandonment of this property. And we just have to have a public.
So there, the terminology is a little confusing, but there's the, um, discontinuance, which is the land that, um, the believers need to have incorporated back into their property, um, just the, the three hundred and seventy-five square feet. And then there's the, um, dedication of right-of-way, a small forty square feet of sideline that the believers are going to dedicate back to the village.
Okay.
So, um, for state statutes and for our ordinance, right-of-way dedications, you know, giving what else to the village, requires a CSM, plan commission approval, village board, um, final action.
Okay.
The, sorry.
Do we actually have to give that forty, that forty feet back, or would that just be, would it simplify?
It would be very much cleaner if we could, yes, still have the dedication, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, that needs to go back to the plan commission, CSM, but the, um, discontinuance of the, the binding of the, of the property would just go after the forty.
That would be, I don't, I, you know, again, unless something comes up, I don't think the general consensus here is we're really comfortable with this.
Yep, so that would be July seventeenth.
Okay.
We might have to make a publish as the class three.
As long as it's how that word says, I don't think. Probably no one here. You can't, obviously you can't publish a class three because.
Right, that's okay.
But we've had a class three published, okay?
Okay, well, I'm gonna trust you guys get this out, this is already that option, uh, at table.
All right.
All right, um, we will go to, uh, report of finance here, um, the twenty-four, twenty-eight capital improvement plan, just a couple of notes on this, um, just make it to the report on the two-to-two vote. Um, I suggested that we bring forward for everybody's information here, the capital improvement plan, um, will need to be, uh, you know, we will need to discuss that tonight. And we will be looking at a resolution move forward on this, just to make sure we're all clear on this. The capital improvement plan came through all of the committees at this point, um, and I think the only one who didn't probably see this was, um, trustee Evans, because he weren't part of that. However, this is, uh, just to get this, uh, get this resolution on the board, so we can move forward into the budget plan, there will be many chances for us to comment on this, is that correct, Jesse?
Correct, um, anything listed here in the capital plan, um, primarily, like I mentioned on the initial presentation at finance, in a perfect world, we could simply copy and paste that twenty-twenty-four executive column into the budget presentation this fall, that's a perfect world. As we all know, market conditions change, priorities change, um, construction estimates change, us change. So, long story short is, while these projects can be listed in the budget this fall, that is another, um, chance for the village board to review this listing of projects and the associated numbers and funding sources. Um, but also, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars exceeds my spending capacity, even if it's budgeted, um, as an administrator, and this, uh, and multitude of projects within this plan would, that has to come back, any of those projects has to come back through committee as well. So, um, there are, um, multiple more levels of review of these items.
I think the concern that we heard from, um, uh, from the finance committee was primarily over the, um, police, uh, the police locker room. I think we, we did get information via email today.
Yes, um, I asked, yes, I asked, um, chief capener to prepare a summary of his, um, estimates and, uh, information that he had gleaned from, uh, various contractors in order to come up with an updated number for the capital plan, um, and that was, um, distributed electronically, um, this afternoon for the board.
Okay, so are we looking here for a motion in a second?
A motion in a second.
And, uh, with discussion on this, so, um, I will look for a motion, um, uh, for approval of the CIP, um, uh, capital improvement plan for twenty-four to twenty-eight.
I'll move to.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, uh, discussion on this item at this point in time, I will direct to, um, all parties, but, uh, Lisa, I think you had some concerns at the finance committee, did you like to discuss this at this time?
Yeah, sure, um, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm having a little trouble hearing, but I, I think you asked me if I had a couple of things that I talked about at finance?
Right.
Okay, um, yeah, I did, and Jesse, I had, um, asked about the ADA compliance issue, and I think you were gonna check with the building inspector, um, we got no information on that.
Uh, yes, I give verbal update on that, um, because I did not have the code section handy and, um, I, I frankly, I missed that in my response out to the village board, um, because we are looking at plumbing updates, that would trigger the ADA, simply replacing tile or lockers, what have you, would not, but because we are looking at, um, plumbing repairs and updates, that would trigger the ADA compliance.
What, um, what specifically are the plumbing issues? And, you know, the other thing I'll say is, I did notice that the chief sent this to you, um, on the twenty-seventh, which was Tuesday. So I'm disappointed that we got it at twenty-two-two today. Um, to be able to review today, you know, three hours before our meeting, so I'm a little disappointed about that. Um, I did read most of his report, I did not have enough time to look at it completely. Um, and there, there is some information in there that I think we can probably discuss as we go forward. Um, but, um, you know, information like the water heater needs to be replaced, um, I think we talked about that in the past. It's too bad if they've been going out with, going without hot showers because the water heater needed to be replaced. Um, so things like that, so I'm, yeah, I'm disappointed that I didn't get that information in time.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Lisa, can you hear me at this time?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so I guess, um, as, as we kind of talked about at this point in time, we will have additional chances to take a look at this, uh, through the budgeting process and to, um, uh, to, to really kind of take a look in detail, um, for this specific project, so.
Yeah, that sounds great, Dan, I mean, I, and I think that, um, that needs to be looked in further, I think we know that that's gonna be a little more complete when we get some estimates. So I look forward to those in the future.
Very good, any other comments, Jim?
So, uh, I see it went up to a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Normally, items over twenty-five thousand, which you just mentioned, you bid out, correct?
Yes, construction issues, yes, items, yes.
Well, well, over that, so I'm wondering why we don't want to bid it out, I guess that is an option.
We would have to bid it, we would have to bid this project, but these are estimates for a planning document, this is not a budget document. This document sets forth a snapshot of projects that we're looking at, what the estimated costs of those projects are, what the anticipated funding mechanisms for those projects are. This is a plan, this is not a budget document, this does not lock in or commit us to any projects or any sort of, um, funding mechanism or any specific dollar amount listed in here. These are best estimates based upon contractors' feedback, based upon professional experience, and projects listed in here are identified by staff as priorities, not only in the coming year, but over the next five years. These are larger items that we want to plan for and look ahead at, um, because again, these are significant items that we need to account for. Um, so this plan does not commit any expenditures, it does not commit any projects, we would have to bid these out.
And it's just significantly more than what it was six months ago, eight months ago.
Yeah, and as the, uh, chief's memo noted, um, he tried to estimate himself, that clearly did not work out well. So therefore, he brought in a couple of contractors to walk through and refine the numbers and has some estimate information, uh, included as well, and again, these are all estimates. Now, the actual budget document this fall, the scope can be reviewed, the budgeted allocation can be reviewed, the, um, bidding process, the, the breakdown of what's actually bid out for that project can be, i- is subject to review. But this is simply a planning document to look ahead.
So I understand this, Jesse, um, it, it would be no different than Public Works saying that their five-ton truck is going to be budgeted for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, knowing that when it comes to the actual budget, that the, the bid or the anticipated cost would be narrowed down a bit based on the scope of, uh, the truck and what the current, um, manufacturing time and the time.
Correct, the results of the state bid package, what have you, um, road bids, those, those are engineering estimates. That road bid could come back higher, could come back lower, we won't know that until it's specifically bid with very specific, um, uh, scope, project scopes, these are estimates, that, that I need to stress, these are estimates in a plan, this is not committing us.
Should you have any more time?
Yes.
Um, Dan, could I, um, just make one more comment?
Okay, we'll, we'll type here once, I'm gonna go to somebody who hasn't spoken.
Sure, thank you.
Dave?
No, that, I just want to make sure that you saw that.
Yes, yeah, I'll do that, um, anybody else here who wants to speak? Um, Lisa, go ahead.
Sure, the only other thing was, um, when you click on the link for, for this topic, um, if the public is clicking on this link, there's actually no loaded information in to show them the CIP. So that's too bad for them, um, the, all the other items we're talking about tonight, when you click on the link, you can see the information, but that is absent from tonight.
I'm sure we can get that taken care of, correct, Jesse?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Um, Jim?
Yeah, so Jesse, the figure we got last year, that was an estimate too, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, the estimate last year and the estimate now, there's quite a discrepancy there.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
You're, you're using this one that we have today as an estimate, but the other one was the estimate also.
Yes, sir. Correct. And the difference there is, as the chief pointed out, he self-calculated that initial estimate based upon his past experiences in projects. Then this updated estimate, he actually had contractors come through, construction professionals look and understand what they are thinking as far as needs and wants within the locker room, and they gave an estimate based upon updated construction material costs, labor costs, et cetera, hence the vast difference. It is a police chief making a construction estimate versus an actual construction professional providing a cost estimate, hence the disparity.
Dave, you have a question? You go, okay, any further questions on this? Okay, I'll seek a motion in a second, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan as presented.
We, we have a trust, we have a motion by trustee Luft and a mo- uh, second by trustee Armstrong.
Forward to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Katie, do you need to show hands? Okay, very good. All right, we'll go to the report of the planning commission here, um, we have, uh, two ordinances, we're in two resolutions. I'm suggesting that we look at ordinance one and two, um, taken together, if we want time, Jesse, can you explain what's going on here?
Absolutely, actually, both of these ordinances are, um, points of clarification for our zoning map. Um, we have a property over on First Avenue that is zoned as duplex residential, we are looking to update that to MF fourteen multifamily residential, as it is an existing, um, CBRF, and the appropriate, um, zoning, um, is that multifamily residential. This is correction of a mapping error. Similarly, item two is a correction of a mapping error where the institutional, um, zoning designation was carried um, from Kennedy Elementary School, um, to a couple of nearby residential, um, properties, and thus, we would change it from institutional to single-family, uh, residential zoning, again, as a point of correction on our zoning map.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion in a second on the following ordinances, ordinance resoning nineteen fifty-one First Avenue to DU six duplex residential six to MF multifamily residential fourteen be approved, also ordinance resoning sixteen sixty-one Eleventh Avenue, ten twenty Maple Street, ten oh-six Maple Street and ten oh-two Maple Street from industrial to single-family six, family residential six.
I'll make a motion to approve the result.
I'll second.
A motion in a second, any discussion on these items?
Um.
Right.
Yes, sir. But we, we said you had a question.
Did you want me to ask my question?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, I was just wondering if, um, if the property on First Avenue, are they currently operating as an institution where they have residents that they're caring for, or is this gonna be a whole new, brand-new, um, operation?
I, I think, Lisa, what you're asking, First Avenue was going from DU six duplex residential to a multifamily resident fourteen, right?
Right.
Okay.
They are not currently operating, they would look to start operating in October.
Okay, so currently, they're not operating at all?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
No, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, that motion passes, uh, we're looking for a resolution which will require an offer, uh, a, um, motion and a second just to be on a resolution, uh, conditionally approving the final plat for Stonewall Farms subdivision phase four, as submitted by Blue Stem with conditions, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good, Jesse, I mean, any like to add on that?
Nope, simply part of the process, uh, plating process, the, uh, village would look to approve the final plat for this particular phase of each of the, um, subdivisions, as noted, phase four of Stonewall Farms, phase five of Shady Hollow, with some specific conditions of approval attached to them. Um, those conditions of approval are really, um, meant to, uh, ensure the developer follows through on finalizing, uh, various items, um, such as stormwater management plans, um, ensuring follow-up with the town of Cedarburg on, um, coiled construction plans, um, terms and conditions of the preliminary, uh, plat development agreement as well, letter of credit and so forth. Um, this is, um, pretty straightforward action for the village board to see.
I think one of the discussions that took place at planning commission was, uh, the issue specific to stormwater. Um, and that, that seems to be addressed at this point in time, Jessica?
Correct.
Okay. Very good, so we'll need a motion, uh, I'm sorry, we will need a, uh, offer, a motion in a second.
I'll offer. I'll motion to.
I'll second, given, uh, offer a motion in a second, any discussion on this at all? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good, let's move over to, um, let's move to, um, Shady Hollow, Jesse.
Uh, same type of situation, I, I, uh, attempted to provide a overview of both, but some of the conditions for approval with regards to Shady Hollow include, uh, the maintaining that construction traffic, uh, shall use Pleasant Valley Road to access the subdivision, um, stormwater management plan approvals, um, terms and conditions of the phase one final plat or preliminary development agreements shall apply to phase five as well, basically carrying over, um, the rules and regulations that we had set forth earlier with regards to the development. A letter of credit, um, no building permits to be issued until a binder layer of asphalt is in place. Basically, we want, we don't want the, uh, road base, the gravel road base damaged, um, we want, um, to maintain uh, appropriate, uh, road conditions, um, site grading and erosion control plans matching the current lot numbering to ensure clarity with, uh, all of the submitted materials and, uh, proper identification of the plat as the phase five final plat. Um, another important one, um, is to ensure that intersection visibility with the proposed subdivision roads and Pleasant Valley Road will be increased to desirable levels by lowering Pleasant Valley Road during the final plating of the northern phases to desirable grade. This is a carryover condition from some of the original, um, approvals for the Shady Hollow subdivision, just reiterating that to make that abundantly clear for those future road updates.
Very good, well, it looks like we're gonna be, uh, developing some more, uh, single-family housing, which is good for our village. Uh, we will look for a, um, a, an offer, a motion in a second. I'll offer.
I'll move to. I'll second.
And this is for a resolution condition, uh, conditionally approving the final plat for Shady Hollow subdivision phase five, as submitted by Meadowbrook Acquisitions LLC with conditions, any discussion on this at this point? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, all right, we're gonna kick it over to you, Jesse, for the village administrators' report.
Sure, a few items for the village board this evening, um, earlier today, um, I reported out that we had a significant water main break on Clarin Court. Um, that break has been repaired, we are happy to say that, uh, with the initial excavation and repair, um, the crews did not find, um, any concerns or damage, um, which they thought might have occurred to the sanitary lines in the area. Um, we will continue to monitor it, but, um, it is repaired and everybody is back in service. Uh, hats off to the, um, quick response by the utility, they actually called folks in from scheduled vacation today um, to make it happen, and that they did within the confines of a workday, so, um, hats off to the utility on their quick action and response. Um, in-person absentee voting for the July eighteenth special election starts this Wednesday here at Village Hall. Um, on Monday, July tenth, the clerk's office will visit Village Point Commons to facilitate in-person absentee voting at the request of the facility. Um, that said, the clerk's office is, uh, prepped and ready to go, um, as usual, they have, uh, uh, a good handle on things and this special election, albeit a bit of a curveball, um, they are ready to go, so. Um, budget instructions will be distributed to departments early next week, this kicks off the official kickoff of the twenty twenty-four budget season. It starts significant, uh, primarily at the staff level with these instructions, um, department heads will go into our budgeting module, entering in their requests, be supporting information, documentation, what have you. Um, and then, um, this gets to, uh, goes before committees for initial review, very similar to the capital improvement plan, where the departments will bring their, um, requested budgets for, um, feedback to the, their various committees, um, then it comes to my desk where an executive budget is crafted. That executive budget looks to balance the needs and wants across the entire organization. So you will see, as a village board, changes from the department-requested column to my executive column. And what I am proposing to you as the village board as the final budget allocations. Again, that is my recommendation, we will then, that will be presented to the village board, we will have budget workshop or workshops whereby the village board can, um, ask questions, um, give feedback, look to make updates, changes, what have you, different allocations to different funds, we can talk about all of that over the course of a workshop or two to get to the point of having the budget refined for a public hearing in early November. Then the second meeting in November, we look to approve the, uh, budget because then that gives time for us to get the tax bills printed and out the door by December fifth. So that is a ten-thousand-foot level of our budget process, starting in August, ending at Thanksgiving, so. Um, that kicks off early next week with the instructions going to the departments, as I mentioned. Um, last but not least, as a quick reminder, village offices will be closed tomorrow in observance of the Independence Day holiday. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, uh, just to welcome to your guys, uh, what a nice, smiley bunch of guys out there doing a really nice job, um, and, uh, hats off to them. We should convey, um, the thanks from the board for the hard work that they've been coming on occasionally, so, really appreciate that. Um, and Jesse, thank you so much for budget season, I know it's been a very busy season, we really appreciate that. All right, thank you very much, let's move on to licenses, I'm looking for approval of operators licenses um, for the folks listed here, that's pretty much straightforward here, um, need a motion in a second.
I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do a motion in second, any discussion on these items? Right, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, let's talk about approval of the issuance of a class B, class C beer and wine license to Amanda Hanson. Opposed? That motion carries. Let's talk about approval of the issuance of a class B, class C beer and wine license to Amanda Hanson. Agent for the Grafton Hotel Associate LLC doing business as Hampton Inn thirteen eighty-five Gateway Drive for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Anything going on with this one, Jesse?
Uh, pretty straightforward. Just a specific uh, individual as agent for um. The LLC doing business as the Hampton Inn. Um, the license is um, issued directly to that individual as agent for that business.
Very good. They need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Lisa.
Awesome.
The motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries as well. Let's go to the, uh, reported bills. I did see a little bit of back and forth going on in village expenditures. I need a motion in a second and then we can discuss any specifics.
I'll make a motion to move.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions on the village benefits at this time?
Um, I have a question if I may.
Yes, please, Lisa.
Um, so Jesse, I'm just curious about um. You know, the expenditures we've had in the police department for legal fees over the last few months. And so we're kind of getting up there in the double digits, maybe seventy to eighty thousand dollars. Um, in reviewing their um, CIP for this year. It looks like, I think they were only, I think you only authorized them to spend three thousand dollars. In legal fees and that is basically under the um, administration area. So I guess going forward is, are we gonna try to figure out where to take that extra money?
Yes, absolutely. That is part of um, our, our job as the accounting. Um, it does get placed into a line item. Um, you know, obviously the, the uh, hearing wasn't unexpended or unexpected um, issue um, or expense rather. Um, that said, we book it to the most appropriate place and then look to um, fill in with um, budget updates uh, at, at the end of the year. Yep.
Okay, great. Great. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other discussion of the expenditures at this time? A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. I'll second.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa. Have a great time up in Door County.
Thank you. See you soon, everybody.